Hold order and recording of members present and absent.
Manson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Pinkleton.
Here.
And Parker is absent.
Our open meeting compliance statement?
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December fifteenth of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least twenty-four hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view, the office of the superintendent.
Item number three, consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. The consent agenda consists of the discussion, consideration, and approval of the following. Were there any additional items to do business to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Minutes of the July tenth, 2023 meeting, approval of the financial report, approval of the extra duty assignment schedule, approval of the activity fund report, approval of the activity fund fundraisers, approval of the activity fund interaccount transfers, approval of the booster club sanctioning request, and then declaring of the following items surplus.
If you'll go back up to agenda item three point two, our July tenth, 2023 minutes, not see any errors with those minutes. Agenda item three point three, have two attachments there for you to look at. The first are our investments. Those investments are done through Woods County Treasurer. Our investments appear to be all up to date and current. If you look at the top attachment, the top attachment is the normal finance report that I give you, and this is our first one to begin the year. And so you can look there and see at our five different local areas of revenue, our gross production, motor vehicle tax, REA tax, school land earnings, and county formula. So I'll point out to you, gross production, it's kind of a driver behind a lot of the things we're able to do in our district, or half of where we were a year ago. So you can see in July of last year, we collect one hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and five. This year, seventy thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. Okay, so obviously, we, you know, monitor that and look at that each month, and that's fluctuating changes, just like a different last year. Just want to make you aware of those chargeable areas. You can see we're down in four of the five to begin our first month. Again, no reason to panic, but just want to make you aware of that. If you'll then look at the next page, on page two, have a comparison graphically from FY twenty-four to FY twenty-three to FY twenty-two. And so if you'll go down to page three, you can then see those numbers in a chart. And look at some comparison between our first month of FY twenty-four with FY twenty-three. We've seen a revenue decrease from one year to the next of one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight, sixty-seven, and we've seen an expense increase, just one month in, from last year of seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five, fifty-one. Okay? If you look at the last page, on page five, we received our state allocation, and tried to give you a little bit of history there with this attachment on the amount of money we've received from the state. If you look at that top line, that's the amount of money per student. Now that changes about three times a year, we're going to, our allocation is going to be adjusted, and that's according to enrollment numbers, and then those of each student, those are going to be weights that are given to each student. And so about three times a year, that number's going to change. To kind of give you an idea of what that looks like, if you look at FY twenty-three, you can see initially, we were receiving over thirty-seven hundred, but by the time we got to the end of the school year, our allocation had increased to thirty-eight hundred. And that's all adjustments in enrollment, student weights, transportation weights, and so. If we look at the bottom line there, you have total allocation. And so you can see an increase in our allocated money, and that's a credit to our legislature taking those steps to make a pretty large investment in education. Now, we are off the formula, but even being off the formula, you can see from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, we've got about a four hundred thousand dollar increase in our state aid. Again, this will adjust upper bound depending on enrollment numbers. So hopefully, we'll continue to see a midterm and then a final allocation that will increase. So this is paid out over twelve months. We don't get that each month, but they spread that out over the course of your school year. Okay, agenda item three point four, we're not bringing any extra duty assignments this month. We're going to give our administrators a month. We've got some class sponsors that need to be filled, some other extra duty, but you're going to see Juan LaCia next month will be coaching middle school football, assistant basketball. He'll be middle school football assistant, assistant basketball, and middle school assistant track. You're also going to see Tina Pettis is going to be district coordinator, test coordinator. Really appreciate Ms. Pettis stepping up and doing that for us, and so you'll see the change on the extra duty assignment schedule next month for that. We also are going to have Trey Johnson is going to coach middle school girls' basketball and middle school boys' basketball. Trey is an extremely talented individual. He's going to have assistants that can help him with both of those. We bus those students out to the rec center. I know that Ms. Martini and Coach Foster have done a lot of work on the logistics to it, and I really appreciate that. I think it's a good plan, and I think we've got the right person to lead both those programs. Agenda item three point five, our activity fund report. If you will open the activity fund report, you can see our expenses for July there. That is the month of July current. If you'll look at agenda item three point six, we had some fundraisers come in late, and so want to make note of those. So if you will open up agenda item three point six, if you go to page eight, and this is the spreadsheet that was approved at the July board meeting, so we add these to that same spreadsheet. So if you go to page eight, you will see... You will see there with AHS vocal, Ms. Alva Pageant. The Ms. Alva Pageant previously has been done through our speech department as a speech fundraiser, and Mrs. Sutter has taken that Ms. Alva Pageant on for vocal, and so we wanted to make that change and make that note for the board. If you will then look, go back to page six, you will see middle school library. It's not on page six. It would be on page... First one to find is a surprise. Okay, there it is, page ten, page ten. Middle school library, we've got four different or additional items that we want to add to that. And part of we want to do this to make sure that we're as transparent as we could be. You can see book fairs on there twice. Went ahead and added it again because it wasn't done for a year. And so we kind of wanted to make sure that stood out to the board. And also see the mother-son dance, the father-daughter dance. I mentioned book fair and then donations. Okay? Now we're going to go to AMS Stuco, which is right below that. Student council turned in a back-to-school dance, and so you can see it says dances, fall, winter, spring, so kind of covered all our bases for dancing at the middle school this year, and then we have donations also added. And then we'll go back up to page five, high school yearbook. We do not have any of these in, and so we want to make sure we colored those so that the board would be aware. Sell yearbooks, we have yearbook ads, senior ad sales. We also, sometimes they'll sell older yearbooks. You can see, I sold a couple in FY twenty-three, donations, and then Strawbridge Commission. They give a portion of the money they make on student sales back to our yearbook department. Okay? Agenda item three point seven, there are no interaccount transfers. Agenda item three point eight, we had another booster club sanctioning request. This is for Alva Middle School. Talking with Ms. Martini about kind of what this group's intent, they really want to be able to support middle school teachers and students in almost act in a similar fashion as the elementary booster club, help with organization of teachers' meals on parent-teacher conference nights, gifts for teachers, help with any prizes that may be needed for students. And so that's kind of the intent. The middle school booster club has been around and has an account. They just have not been a sanctioned organization, have been inactive over the last couple of years. You can see their applicant representative is Mrs. Jason Heaton, and you can see their reasoning for applying for sanction. And then finally, we have some surplus items from Lincoln, Pepsi machine, and the ice cream machine surplus.
We tried to fix it last year. We did, we had someone come out and fix it. Well, we paid them to fix it. Didn't really get fixed. So, but we will not shy away from the ice cream. We just won't be serving ice cream cones.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding the consent agenda? If there are none, I would recommend a brief.
I'd like to motion we accept three point one and three point nine as presented.
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Item number four, vote to approve purchase order consequences for the following funds for fiscal year twenty-four. Four point one, general fund as referenced. Four point two, building fund as referenced. Four point three, child nutrition fund as referenced.
Okay, if you'll open up the first attachment on agenda item four point one, we'll run through a couple of these, and if you have questions, let me know. Purchase order number one sixty-six, five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five-seven. That is a portion that was not covered through E-Rate. E-Rate helps with our technology hotspots, so that is the portion that was not paid through E-Rate that the district pays for. You can see throughout our purchase orders, there are a lot of reimbursements for background checks. Purchase order number one sixty-seven, one thousand one hundred and fifty, with Oklahoma ASBO, that's the Oklahoma Association of School Business Officials, and so they provide the training for Ms. Owen and myself, who were able to use. Purchase order number one seventy-five, on-point fire protection. On-point fire protection has replaced luck and bills. They no longer provide inspections on sprinkler systems, and so on-point came up and inspected those sprinklers at Washington Longfellow Middle School, High School. Purchase order number one ninety-one, Dr. Sean Roberson, this is a psychological evaluation on a student. The cost of that is five thousand dollars. Purchase order number one ninety-five, True Line Striping. We had the north and south parking lots of high school have this company come in to stripe those parking spaces with the chip and seal. It's difficult for our custodians to be able to do that with the equipment we have, and so wanted to give them a little bit of relief there, and we had that company done. Company that looks really nice. Purchase order number one ninety-seven, two thousand four hundred and ninety-five, with Safe School ID. That is a renewal of our software checking in and checking out program. Purchase order number two oh three with Kyler Construction, three hundred and thirty-one, forty-six, seventeen, payment for our HVAC project out of the general fund. Next month, you'll see one for similar amount that will come out of our building fund. I'll give you an update on the HVAC project in a few minutes, but going well. And then purchase order number two oh seven, four thousand dollars from Amazon to replace our soundboard in the auditorium. It went out, received a text from Mr. Brott last week, or yeah, last week, and we were able to get that purchase order completed, get that turned in, and it's supposed to be in here, I believe, this week prior to Ms. Alva. We'll have that ready to go. If you look at the second attachment for the general fund, those are all new employees and payroll encumbrances. If you look at building fund four point two. It's a little bit, okay. Purchase orders number twenty-eight and twenty-nine, strip and refinish the floors at Lincoln and Washington. Lincoln and Washington had some buildup of dirt and just had some things that we felt like we needed to kind of start over, and they both did a really great job of getting on me about this, and when you walk in there, you will be, you won't recognize what the floor looks like. So, yeah, it's amazing. Ms. Williams can show you the picture of it. So I appreciate their work and pushing me to do that. Purchase order number thirty-one, seven ninety-six, fifty, Hunter's Livestock Company. That was some dirt and clay for softball field. Purchase order number thirty-two, if you'll remember last month's board meeting, how hot it was in here, the HVAC chiller has been repaired. So you see that purchase order for three hundred dollars. It's working today. Purchase order number thirty-three for four hundred dollars with Chapman Bush. They installed an AC unit in the softball dugout. Our young ladies had no air in the dugout locker room area, and so we got that remedied, and so glad to be able to do that. Want to really appreciate the work Coach Foster did on that, making sure that we got that done. Purchase order number thirty-five for twelve thirty with the fireplace. They came through and inspected all of our ADs, replaced all of our batteries at all the sites, twelve hundred and thirty dollars for that. Purchase order number thirty-six, twenty-eight hundred, peak environment. So at Washington, they've got for their playground fall areas, pebbles, and those pebbles will get up on sidewalks. We've had some staff slip, we've had students slip, requires some work for the custodian to go out and sweep, and so Mrs. Williams found a solution for that with some playground barriers that peak environment will be able to install for twenty-eight hundred dollars. And then purchase orders number thirty-seven and thirty-eight, that's an increase in the amount of money we spend on school supplies, but really have a lot of faith in Ms. Kaluth. She's done a really good job of organizing our custodial supplies, ordering for the long term. If you remember, when I would do this, I'd limp us along every couple of weeks and reorder, and so she's got a much better plan and very thankful for her work on this. So you can see those purchase orders for ten thousand five hundred and ninety-two and then nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-one, fifty-seven. Okay, agenda item four point three, our child nutrition fund. Just have three purchase orders out of that. Number ten for three hundred dollars has been Daddy Plumbing and Drain. That was to repair the high school water fountain in the high school and help with the installation of that. Purchase order number eleven, three hundred dollars with Grey Dog Mechanical repairs to walk-in freezer. And then purchase order number twelve, five thousand six hundred, those are going to be some TVs to purchase from Sight &amp; Sound for cafeteria and part of that renovation project. I'll show you some pictures of that. Any questions regarding agenda item four point one, four point two, or four point three?
I just can't help but comment on how blessed we are. I think that we got a soundboard go out for four thousand dollars immediately, we haven't been, I don't think that wouldn't have happened in seven years. So thank you for that. It's blessing us, but it's really, feels good having money to do things, doesn't it? So any motion to approve the floors?
Move to approve items four point one, four point two, four point three. Second.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Item number five, superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll start with our resignation retirements or reassignments. We have two resignations. Our first is from Dusty Horn. Dusty is resigning and taking another job outside of the school profession, and so Dusty taught middle school math, high school math, and also was coach first previously, and so we appreciate Dusty and wish him the best. And then the second resignation we have is from Micah Maloney. Micah's going to stay home. We really appreciate her, and when she's ready to get back to work, we're certainly going to, hopefully we've got a spot for her. She did a great job. For my communication, I have one attachment there, our accreditation from the State Department of Education. This is a direct result of the hard work of our administrative staff last year. Mrs. Hall, Mrs. Durkey, Ms. Owen, Ms. Nettles, all of them, and as I mentioned, our principals did a great job. No deficiencies in our accreditation, and so appreciate their hard work in doing that because it's getting more and more difficult to not have deficiencies, so great job. Agenda item five point three, strategic plan, so I have attached a presentation, kind of... Walk through this, and this will be a tremendous amount of information, and you have that, as I said, an attachment. See that it's long ways, and it's because I started with our other one that direction, now you can't change it, so lesson learned. So resources, capital planning, just kind of want to talk a little bit about this, going to be meeting in the next couple of weeks with Dr. Decker and some of our strategic plan members to go over kind of where we're at, where we're headed, and get their feedback and advice on this. So first of all, talk about the high school cafeteria. We wanted to try to modernize the cafeteria and make it a more inviting space for our students, hopefully have more students eat on campus, and then eventually, as you'll see, turn that into a space where it can be almost like a student lounge or student meeting area. So have some old pictures. If you remember when we started developing this concept, and I don't want to say them all because I'll leave out a name, I know better than to do that, but I had some students that met with me the year that I was up here, and I said, hey, what do you guys want to see with the cafeteria? Because when I would go up there to eat, they were up there eating every day. And so it's really credit to them, they formulated these plans and these ideas in their mind, and so it's amazing, it's beautiful what the cafeteria looks like. And so you can see from one picture to the next, just how different it looks. It's before a picture, now this is what it looks like. If you look right here, if you can see that, so right here, I took these last week, they've now come in and there's countertops that go all the way around the edges of the walls, and those are charging stations, and so students can sit there with their computer, phone, device, charge that, eat. You see there's these mounts, those are double mounts with TVs that'll be on both sides, so the media production class is going to produce some things, they'll have some informational things on the TVs, but then some ESPN and those kinds of things, so really kind of a, more of a collegial environment, I would say, that we're trying to develop. And so really proud of that work, it looks really good. I encourage you after the meeting, if you want to run up there and look, you'll walk in and be blown away with it. HVAC renovation, so might mention on cafeteria, finishing up today, putting another coat on the yellow for gold, and then it will receive certification of occupancy along. HVAC renovation, you've seen outside, they've done the gates for the units, hoping to have the new gym units fired up today. There's some electrical work they're having to do up in the ceiling of the new gym to get that completed, but they're really close there, those units are in. The socks are in and done, so that's what it looks like. You just won't believe how much different it looks, and so that'll be a great space. We will now be able to have a graduation and not limit seating. Won't have to do ten tickets. We'll be able to have our prom, our banquet's, our distinguished Gold Bug banquet, any of those kind of activities on campus, and so that's a really exciting thing, I think, for our students and staff, and really community to make that more of a multipurpose facility and used more often than just a gym. So then I have this list, and I've shared this with you previously and tried to update this a little bit from today. So we mentioned before auditorium lift, we completed that months ago, but that has made our auditorium stage ADA accessible. We have the HVAC, we have the cafeteria renovations, whoops, talk about the, I didn't do that on purpose, not scared, I don't know what happened, all right. Roof repair, it's been a, as we know, it's been a process. I will tell you that the inspection has been completed, it was completed a week ago. They are working on the report, and hopefully will have the report to me by the end of this week and to the adjuster so we can continue making some progress towards those repairs. The paving project, we've talked about expanding that north parking lot and making that wider and going out about ten feet because there's just not enough room for people to back up and get in. One of the things we asked Tri-Ar to look at, or asked that we looked at last week, we need a little bit better lighting out there. Is there a way we can put some poles out on that parking lot? Because we anticipate using the gym more for banquet's, and we need to make sure folks can see. And so they are making some adjustments on that, and when we get those plans, we'll bring that to you. Activity bus, I have submitted proposals to our local banks on an activity bus for a three- or five-year lease to pay that bus out. With what we earn on our interest earnings, it will, we're earning about four and a half to five percent, and that's about what your cost for your interest rate will be, and so we hope that'll be a wash or close to it, and be able to purchase an activity bus in the next couple of months. That activity bus will be just like what we looked at and sat out there a couple of months ago, so if you have questions about that, please let me know. From the Quinn Trust, want to update you where we are there. We have ordered a fourteen-passenger bus that has arrived, and it's being used as we speak. We've also donated ten thousand dollars from that trust towards Alva Golf and Country Club and construction of hitting bays, improvement of the driving range. Take a minute to thank Mrs. Ritchie of the Gold Bug Foundation, Dusty Horn, Van Johnson from the Golf Board, Ms. McGlaughlin, the trustee who approves all those expenditures. We met with the trustee about a week ago to begin looking at twenty-three, twenty-four expenses, and actually the trustee's attorney, who's going to talk to Ms. McGlaughlin about what those projected expenses will be. Once we get those, we'll present that to the board, also with a letter of approval from Ms. McGlaughlin for those expenditures. And since entrance improvements, going to be meeting with Mr. and Mrs. Buckles this week, as you know, they've donated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for entrance improvements. We've kind of put that on hold. I met with them to kind of talk about some long-term planning as a district and didn't want to do something too quickly. They have been very agreeable and prayed, and so I'm going to meet with them later this week to kind of show them where we're at also with our long-range plan. So with that being said, we had, and the next couple of slides are really just informational slides. So Friday, met with Mrs. Webster at Lincoln to meet with our structural engineer to look at Lincoln. We spent probably an hour there, if not a little more, looking at the library, which we know we had that board meeting in there, and the... we know we had that board meeting in there and the sinking of the library. He looked at the patio on the north side and the settling that's occurring there. He looked at the basement and some of the issues we have with water running down that wall and drainage. And looked at some settling between the addition going down the stairs from the library to the red port. So spent some extensive time there looking at those issues. He is going to present a report, gonna send me a report, and then I'm gonna bring that to the board next month for us to have a discussion about what we wanna do moving forward. We have talked previously with our strategic plan, what do we do with Lincoln? If the structural issues are too much, what's the direction we going? Not only have we talked with our strategic plan, but our facilities committee about the direction that we go there. One of the things we talked to the architectural company about is what would it look like if we were to add classrooms to Longfellow in Washington if Lincoln, we weren't able to save Lincoln? What would that look like? Is that, is that a possibility? And so we'll continue to have those conversations and bring any of that information back to you. We're gonna bring that facilities committee back with our teachers and community members stakeholders and talk to them about that structural report that we received and get some feedback and ideas on what direction where we wanna go. If you look at the phase one projects, you know, we put these in phases when we met. If you'll remember, all of these ideas came from our teachers and stakeholders in a survey. And then as a board and administrative team, we went through and we tried to prioritize these into phases. When you talk about the high school cafeteria and you look at the renovation of that, part of that was a long-range thought to move the high school office upstairs into the student lounge and then move the superintendent's office up to the high school and turn the current superintendent's office into a foundation alumni center. So that was kind of a long-range plan when that was done. We also see, we talked a little bit about moving, at the time, vocal to the middle school for ADA compliance. And we talked to Ms. Sutter about that. She didn't feel like there was really a need that maybe that wasn't as big a concern as it once was, but we do need to do some renovation in the vocal room. We need to kind of take the same tack that we took with cafeteria and do the same thing to the vocal room because I think it'll really improve that area also. So you can go through here. Quinn Trust project, something we're looking at for 23, 24 is our indoor hitting bays, a women's locker room and some storage and putting that on the west side of the current indoor complex. So we are talking with the Quinn Trust attorney about that. And then we can go through the rest of these phase two projects from electronic door locks to ag truck to improvement of our track and field area. I will mention really quick that this year, the state has funded, I think it's about a $96 million security grant initiative that each school will receive a distribution to be able to do some security upgrades. And I would anticipate that one of those security upgrades will be using some of those funds towards some electronic door locks. I don't believe we'll be able to use that with our SRO because that will supplant that money, but we do think we might be able to use that in another area that we've already currently kind of started. So that'll be a good thing for the district. Phase three, talking about the high school auditorium lobby, more interior door replacement locks, phase four, and so on. So again, our, each site went through, if you go to site projects, each site went through and kind of listed some areas that they felt like they needed to, had some things to work on. And so I've asked the administrators to update those as they do them and they're gonna come across others, other areas, and to update that when they do. And to use all caps when they do that. I'm kidding, Miss Williams. She didn't use, she didn't use all caps, which really pisses me off. Longfellow Elementary has already got, I believe, Allison HVAC in the counseling music room, is that right?
It's on order. It has not been put in yet. I was told to be in here by Thursday.
Okay, so we're working, Allison's working towards that. Hope to have that done. You can see each site has gone through and prioritized some things and we'll be working on these throughout this year and the next couple of years to get those projects completed. Any questions that you guys have for me with regard to the strategic plan and maybe these discapital improvement? And I know that's a lot of information. You may not have one tonight, you may bring one back next month. That's okay.
No, all I would say was I appreciate everybody's input. I think it's important that you ask your stakeholders. I think it's important you ask your educators as well as, you know, administrators that have to put up with all the nonsense that I request. So I appreciate everybody's input because I think it's important. I think everybody needs to have a voice and I think that's refreshing because I don't really want to be given that opportunity. So thank you for your due diligence.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Item number six, items of current business, six point one, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one through number six, certified positions for the 23, 24 school year.
Okay, I'm gonna start first. We have Trey Johnson, there is Lincoln PE, high school coach. Remember, we brought Trey and Jeremy as adjunct instructors, I believe it was in June. So Jeremy is almost through the provisional certification process. We're probably gonna bring him back next month just for accreditation purposes because I want the agenda to say certified, but Jeremy is almost, he's gonna be certified. Trey received his emergency certification. And so Trey's gonna work toward certification throughout the year. Trey's been a tremendous, tremendous asset to our district and to our kids already. And so very excited to have him. And this simply makes that agenda item more clear through accreditation purposes. Turn it over to Dr. Nice.
Well, we have two that we will be hiring or would like to be hiring for the high school. Lynell Fine is a 29-year teaching veteran. She comes to us from Weatherford. She has also taught in Oklahoma as well as Kansas, Texas, and New Mexico. She is certified elementary and we will be adjuncting her to teach high school ELA, but she has some other areas that are going to be a huge asset to our high school. One is an interventionist. She is, her teaching career has been with the intermediate ages, so the older ages of elementary. So she has some skills teaching students who are maybe struggling readers or struggling in math and knowing how to help those little older students find some skills that they maybe didn't get as younger students is gonna be a huge benefit to all of our students. She also has been in the past, certified in Texas as an ESL teacher, English as a second language. And so she will be helping us out in that capacity as well. Her duties will include teaching sophomore English, but she will also be in our alternative education room one hour a day as well as some intervention time and ELL time. So that's, she's gonna be a huge utility player for us here at the high school. And I am incredibly excited to have her name on the agenda as a potential hire. Juan Lysaya, as Dr. Argo mentioned, is coming to us as a math teacher. He will be at the high school teaching geometry, but he will also be teaching at the middle school level, I believe eighth grade math. He will be working with our middle school students in athletics as well. Mr. Lysaya was a student teacher for us last year for first semester and we lobbied hard, Mrs. Ryder and I lobbied hard with Dr. Argo. It's like, just please let us hire him. Yeah, we know we don't have a spot open, but please let us hire him anyway. And as you can imagine, we were, we were told, no, we can't do that right now. So we were very, very fortunate when Mr. Horn resigned that Mr. Lysaya was available. And so that was another huge blessing. I don't know who amongst is living right, but we greatly appreciate it because that is a, is gonna be an amazing hire for us. The kids already have a great relationship with him and so that's gonna be a great, great thing for our high schools. So those are two, two hires for this.
So he's high school and?
Middle school.
Yes.
I don't know what order. Middle school first, isn't it? I'm presenting.
Yes, that's fine.
This is my team as well. Okay, I have Jill Anderson here. She grew up and was raised in, graduated from Guyman, Oklahoma, received her bachelor's degree with honors in secondary history education from Southwestern Oklahoma State University.
Good off.
We forgive her. She taught history and government at Thomas Fay Custer Schools for nine years and she has been married to her husband Taylor for 10 years and has two children, Wesley, who I will have at Longfellow, and Amelia. And she will be teaching eighth grade history and a couple sixth grade classes is what we're hoping to get approved tonight. And then I have Emma Klein with us today and she's an Alba graduate and a Northwestern graduate, so we can balance it out here. Emma previously taught classes, art classes at Graceful Arts and coordinate the art with school's program for four years. And most recently, she's worked for the Alba Chamber of Commerce as the communications technology specialist. She has over 15 years of experience in guitar performance, vocal performance, four years of orchestra performance with violin, and experience in music composition. She has a passion for music and is dedicated to fostering the love of arts for our young students. And we are presenting to have her at Washington, Longfellow, Lincoln. We're excited to have her.
She had fair intentions, hoping to three schools.
Yep. Okay, and also I'd like to bring up Debbie Wittit. She taught for PE at Longfellow and at Lincoln last year and she has continued to work on her certification. So she got approved at the state level for her emergency certification again for this year, so I'd like to bring her to the board as well.
Thank you.
We can motion to approve certified positions number one through number six. Make the motion, we offer employment, one-year temporary contract to Ms. Fine, Ms. Klein, Ms. Wittit, Mr. Lysaya. How'd you say that? Is that correct? Thank you. Mr. Johnson and Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you too for representing this whole group.
Yeah.
Very much.
Make sure the rest of them show up and do their things, won't you? You are more than welcome to stay, but you also are dismissed.
Thank you, thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Nobody ever wants to stay.
And they all want.
Maybe we didn't let you.
Probably not.
Okay, item six point two, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to the following bus drivers for a physical year of 23, 24.
Okay, you'll see on that attachment, our list of bus drivers. Those are the same bus drivers with the exception of David Manning. And David will be replacing Dusty Horn. So I'd recommend approval of our certified school bus drivers for 23, 24 school year.
Nice to have David Manning here.
He's done, David's been, David's been awesome. He's driven a lot of activity buses for us also through the years. And so we are, it's really exciting to have him come on and be able to help us out with our bus.
Maybe he can work on some financials with you while he's. Do we have a motion to approve the bus drivers?
Move to approve item six point two. Second.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
Okay, item six point three, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the Alba School District handbooks for the 23, 24 school year.
The only thing I would ask before I open up for questions or ask, but just maybe remind you, from a district perspective, is the increase to our lunch prices of 10 cents. We didn't increase our breakfast prices because we're already, we feel like where we need to be there as far as from a state level and in our paid lunch equity tool. But we did increase our lunch prices 10 cents and then we also increased those breakfast and lunch prices for adults at 10 cents. You know, we ended the year with $10,000 that were owed the district in unpaid lunch bills. And so we really wanna encourage folks to complete our free reduced application. If you need help, contact schools, we can help walk you through it. We're not gonna turn away kids from any, you know, they're gonna eat the school bill. You can do a payment plan. We can do whatever we need to do to help you out. But we've really gotta stay in those areas for inflationary reasons. And so as much as it pains us to raise it even a little bit, it's something that we felt necessary to do. So does the board have any questions on any of the handbooks or anything that you might want our administrators to explain?
Same attendance policy, is it in every one of them exactly the same? It looks like student attendance affects our state report card. Did we do, did we change that at all in how much they have to attend? At least two hours per half-day, we became a present decision?
I think the elementary, we just added a little bit more explanation is all we did.
It reads well.
But it hasn't changed. It's just a better explanation of how it affects us.
Just rewording.
And so yeah, school attendance is gonna be, you know, school attendance is a really big driver of our report card. And we all know with a big dress school, it means itself. So that's a big driver of our report card. So I think just reemphasis of that.
Just reemphasis of our social media stuff, correct? There wouldn't be any social media training at any other level at the high school.
They do some digital citizenship at our middle school and I know at Lincoln, they've done digital citizenship before and had some speakers come in before and talk to students.
I could change that should be called again, but maybe I'm a little bit of train there or whatever. Any other questions?
There are no other questions on the handbooks, I would recommend per the written item six point three.
So, thank you. Desperately.
Second.
Pinkleton?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Discussion, six point four, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant one versus applicant number 10, non-certified positions for the 23, 24 school year.
So you can see there on this agenda item, at least those applicants, one through 10, and this is to fill some of our paraprofessional positions. Also wanna mention, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Potter in just a second, but we have one custodian there, Kristen Churniak.
Churniak.
Churniak, our high school, her high school custodian. And then wanna just say, Ms. Potter's done an outstanding job. We were really fortunate to have a special education director with her knowledge and skills. And I'll tell you what, she had to hit the ground running, finding professionals, state reports, you name it. It's kind of been a whirlwind. Have complete confidence in her and our department. She is following really big shoes in this love lace, but she's the person that can do it. She is outstanding. So turn it over to her to introduce some of our paraprofessionals.
Thank you. Can I just list them?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have another Debbie Wittit to our district. We're adding her as a pair. Gracie Gillen, she comes to us with a little bit of experience as a paraprofessional. Celeste Benson is coming to us for Lincoln. Leslie Booth is going to Washington for us. Andrea Wisman, she comes to us as a previous special education teacher, so she has a lot of knowledge of the profession and she's retired, so that's why she's joining us. Rhonda Burson is also joining us. She's going to be here in a few.
Rhonda Burson is also joining us, she's going to be here in a few weeks, she wasn't able to start today. Montana McCollough is going to join us at the high school. And then I'm going to skip ahead to Alicia Boyett. She is going to join us at middle school. And then Heidi Lyons is going to help us out with some speech stuff that's coming at us.
So one of the challenges that we have in a lot of different areas from a staffing perspective is speech pathology is a really difficult area to find certified teachers. And so one of the things that lots of rural schools are doing is doing virtual speech there. And so that's something that we're going to have to take on this year. Doesn't mean we're not willing to continue to advertise and serve for someone. But initially, when we begin the year, that's where we're going to be headed. And Mrs. Potter is still interviewing some different companies and individuals from those companies. And so we're going to have that in place when we need to have it in place, but you won't see that contract until we come to our September board meeting. Because it's, it's, it's a process interviewing those folks and I can assure you, Ms. Potter's doing her due diligence to make sure we, we provide the best, best service for our kids. Any questions? There are none, I would recommend approval of agenda item six point four.
Move to approve item six point four as presented.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
So all of those are in your department, just those. Are they, do we have paraprofessionals anywhere else besides in special ed?
Well, okay, so we have we have teachers aides. Teachers aides and paraprofessionals on our salary schedule are really exciting. We will code them differently to the State Department of Education when they do their employee counts. We have paraprofessionals that we have throughout the, throughout the district. And then we have teachers aides that we only have in our pre-K classrooms and oversized classrooms. We have one oversized classroom in kindergarten. And I don't know if y'all remember this from a few years ago. They reenacted back into law class size limitations for your early childhood parents. And so at that time, we had to place in every one of our kindergartens, a paraprofessional. It's what we called them, it's what we coded them, they acted as a teacher's aide. Okay? So this year, we have one oversized classroom in kindergarten. And so we've added one paraprofessional to serve that class.
I think this is the first time I've ever realized there's two different terms for that. But I was looking at this thinking.
Well.
They were.
Yes.
Are they, do they make different requirements or?
So there are requirements for paraprofessionals. You're going to have to.
It's okay, I don't mean, I don't mean that you don't.
How these more, there, there are significant requirements for paraprofessionals. Some trains they have to go through because that money will be paid through federal programs. And so there's some certain training and certifications that they have to meet. And then we have to turn that in and report that to the state.
So basically they're coded different because they're paying out in different places?
Uh.
Does that make sense? I don't know that I ever really.
And I, and I can tell, I, I said it wrong. I can tell just by looking at her, I said it wrong. Isn't that amazing?
I can say it works.
No, I can tell. So I'm wrong in whatever I said, so like cancel everything else.
I shouldn't have put you on the spot like that, but it just realized to me that.
The State Department likes to see the two coatings, they do like to see the teacher's aide that is helping or a paraprofessional that's working more in special ed. And so it is coded to different places. We use them in both areas the same, so yes, it is, you are right. We aren't paying for it with our federal program money, though. We don't have enough federal program money to cover all the special ed areas. So it is just a cost we get to pick up. But the special ed goes toward beating our maintenance of effort toward our special ed expenses.
So you have to be careful on maintenance of effort.
Yes.
Like when you start, you have to be careful that you serve the same amount and expend the same amount of money from one year to the next.
You have to meet or exceed.
Yeah.
Cause that was way out of whack once at one time.
Yeah, I mean, you really.
Kind of brought us all back in.
If you, you know, one year we go and buy a bus coded special ed, next year we have that big expense to match up against or you have to show that we didn't, you know, there's certain exemptions that you could have.
I'm, I'm sorry to get too, but it's very, I mean, it's interesting and I just now realized that it was different. Sorry, I've been around a long time, I should know that.
I'm learning all the coding and all that too.
Yeah.
And it changes all the time, encoding changes frequently.
Yeah, really, well, I, I'll forget it when I leave here somewhere. But thank you for our teamwork, because that's good. All right, where are we? We are six point five.
I don't think we've done six point four, have we?
We did those one through ten.
Have we done this one?
I don't have the numbers like you guys did, we should be on contracts.
Number one versus.
Yeah, we're good.
I think we did, Lisa, I think. I'm famous for skipping one. Six point five, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following contracts. And we're going to approve them all together, so let's look at them. Six point five, Department of Career and Technology. Six point five point two, American Fidelity Section one twenty-five Flex Plan. Six point five point three, Big Five Community Services Agreement. Six point five point four, H six Digital Branding.
Okay, we'll start with agenda item six point five point one. You can open that attachment, that is our contract to participate in our career tech services. So in facts, ag education and our AMS technology, we receive career tech assistance money. And so by entering into this agreement, we'll receive that money. Agenda item six point five point two. This is American Fidelity. They help with all of our annuity plans, our tax savings plans, they help with Affordable Healthcare Act. They do all of those things. Really, my work works hand in hand with American Fidelity, make sure all of that is correct. Six point five point three, Big Five Community Services Agreement. This agreement to work with Big Five says that we are going to serve their students, their special ed students. Many times who will also contract meals with Big Five and they will, they will pick those up nearby. And then finally, we have H six Digital Branding. Six point five point four. I've had, added a couple of attachments there to that. If you look at the bottom of the attachment, I met with J C Heat today and that's H six Digital Branding. And we really feel like there's a real need for us to do a better job of communicating, getting information out to the community. One of the things that came up in our strategic plan is comments that was made is we never know where to find one thing. We never know where to go. And I can remember, I made the comment, well, we put that on social media, what does that mean? Like where at, what social media, what platform? And so J C, I really am excited about this because I think it's going to be able to really help us drive people more to one area. ALBA Public Schools Facebook page, she's going to help with some other, I don't know all the stuff, but she's going to help us move in that direction as she's helped out athletics. And so I think it'll be a really good, I think it'll be a really good process for the district and a good contract for the district with J C.
Will she be considered contract labor?
Yes, contracted employee, yes, that's correct. And she met with the principals a little bit last Tuesday, everybody was out of town. And they kind of set up a way to communicate and get information out. And how we can, we can focus our communication better. Any questions regarding agenda items six point five point one through six point five point four?
Does she answer directly to you or is that how it works?
Yeah, so, well, she's gonna, so like teachers are going to be able to send if they've got something they want to, they want to get out there, they're going to send to the principal and the principal's going to review it. And they're going to look at it. And then I'm also going to be on that and I'm going to see it and I'm going to look at it. And then there's going to be some things that I'll, I'll say, hey, I think we ought to put something out about this. And she'll be able to be responsive. They've talked about subject, you got, anybody want to jump in, talk about subject line, like they put a, they wanted ASAP, they put that on the subject line.
She had certain codes to help her know, does this need to be immediate? Does this, can this go on in the next two weeks? Can this go in the next, so she knows looking at the subject head with.
I think it could be really overwhelming, that's good work. Awesome. Communication's good, same with them. Are they motion that we accept six point five point one through six point five point four as presented?
Second.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yeah.
Six point six, discussion of possible board action vote to approve the renewal of the copier lease and service agreement for nine digital copiers for this figure twenty-four as required under provisions of lease agreement stated November the third, twenty twenty-one between the ALBA School District and Office Solutions Inc., now known as Century Columbus Technologies.
So this is the final year of our copier lease with this company. And then we'll be putting that back out to bid. I would recommend approval of agenda item six point six.
How the copiers been? Get help pretty quick on these. On this personal note, I also use these people and I was first like, oh no. Cause they, they're actually from Topeka, outstate. And I thought, there is just no way they can service us from Topeka. And I couldn't have been more wrong. They've done outstanding job of being there with us. I, I put all those words back in again. And so I'm, I think that it'll be fine with your hands.
Move to approve item six point six.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Six point seven, discussion of possible board action vote to approve the following board policies. Complaints as to a student related to an administration. F O D, F O D dash R, F O dash R five, G B A, F F A C C, C N dash R one, G K F, C D A C, as referenced, I should have just said it correctly, sorry.
Okay, first start by thanking Mr. Hanson and Ms. Kane. We met a couple of weeks ago to look at some different salary and policy issues and focused really on some policy issues. We looked at an energy savings contract that we're not quite sure we want to bring back to the board yet. So I'm looking at some some more references on, on that particular contract, but and still have some other policies that we're going to look at and review. So we'll start here with the complaint, complaints as to a student related to an administrator supervisor or board member. This policy has been developed through our attorney at R F R. And so the committee felt like there was no need to make any adjustments to that policy. If you look at the next policy, suspension of students. This is a revised policy, you can see that they have crossed out low point here. And they have added, this may be modified by the administration on a case by case basis. This policy is required by law to accept those changes. If you look at F O D R, this is the regulation of that policy. And again, we see the same, same changes that were made from the previous policy F O D. If you look on page six, we have F O R five. This is an accreditation standard, committee felt like it was important to bring this to the board for adoption. This is stating that physical restraint and seclusion will not be used. And so it also talks about the behavior intervention plan and IDPs. And so we wanted to have this on file for accreditation purposes, but also that we don't restrain and secrete students. Page eight, G B A, the Open Records Act. The only change to this is we had to identify a particular person. We could not just say superintendent secretary. And so Terry Owen is the person that will be the district superintendent of records. F F A C C, Diabetes Medical Management Plan. So this is a new policy, we have a diabetes medical management plan, but it's not listed as a policy anonymous form. Felt like this would be a good way to unify that and make that in a uniform manner. And so that is policy F F A C. Policy C N R one is school transportation regulations. If you will go to page thirteen, that is where the change was made in this policy. Used to be buses could only transport within the boundaries of their district. Now buses can transport students outside of the boundaries of their district. We are not changing our transportation routes, nor do we anticipate driving buses outside of our district into others to pick up students, but that is legal to do. Purchase order, or purchase order, wow. Policy G K F, disciplinary action for misuse of school bathrooms and changing facilities. You can see the additions to this policy is down at the bottom. It pertains to locker rooms and athletic events. If a suitable meeting room or area is not available, a coach may enter a locker room before, during or after a school sponsored activity. Provided all students present are fully clothed, the coach is accompanied by one addition, by at least one additional adult at all times. And if the coach is the opposite sex of the student present, the coach should be accompanied by at least one adult of the same sex as the student that, student's present. The reason for this policy, if you remember a year ago, we had to turn this in for accreditation and they were going to withhold state aid if this policy was not approved. And so it's important that we, again, although that has not been said this year, it's important that we adopt this policy. And you can see the legal records there, it's not. General fund balance, C D A C. General fund balance, you can see the changes in the allowable carryover for each year and you can see that that has increased. Be bringing some policies to you next month, hopefully on maternity leave, sick leave, F M L A. We want to align those with our A E A contract since there's some crossover there. And our attorney feels like it's important that all of those are the same. Are any questions regarding any of these policies? Kane, I want to thank Mr. Hanson and Ms. Kane for spending the time and looking through those with me. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval.
I appreciate all of the glasses and all these qualities and. Pinkleton gets to serve himself as well. Let's all undertake a motion.
Make a motion, we approve the following board policies as referenced.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Item six point eight, discussion with, with, discussion only with no action to be taken. That's a little different, isn't it? Review the list of speakers to discuss social media with students and talented student athletes with parents.
So wanted to provide a list as instructed by the board for this August meeting qualified speakers to talk about social media effects in the educational environment. So you can see that list there. This list is culminated from discussions with other superintendents through independent research. And also I think Ms. Kane, through her resources in the student council world and councilment world, was able to provide some really good speakers names. Also, you can look at the second list there for having speakers talk with unique needs of talented students and offer suggestions. Again, that list is also done through independent research, discussions with superintendents. And Ms. Kane and Mr. Hanson.
Thank you for that work. And then first one of those meetings will be tomorrow night, right?
Tomorrow night. Yes, Coach Foster and Mrs. Ryder are going to be discussing some N C A eligibility and N F S A, the parent seat video. the parent seat video. And then we'll also be looking at costs for these speakers and developing some kind of budget for doing that.
There's a good cost.
And most of these speakers or a lot of these speakers, when I said, a few of these speakers range anywhere between fifty-five hundred and six thousand for a couple of hours. And so want to be cost effective with that money for as many people as we can. So obviously not all of these speakers will be brought in, not all of these programs will be implemented, but we certainly want to try to bring a few of those at all sites, not just at our high school level. Okay? Any other questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. So we need a moment of notice, but that's just info. Okay. Discussion of possible board action, six point nine, vote to approve the following teachers as adjunct instructors, instructors as adjunct instructors for twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, if you'll look at that list you have there, there you have at six point nine point one, Dixie Meyer for chemistry, Mary Tyree, aeronautics, Brooke Meyer, she teaches at the career tech in anatomy and physiology. Lanell Fine, AHS, English, Nick Brock, guitar, and Scott Law, American history. Previously, adjunct instructors could only teach three hours outside of their area. And if you remember South Senate Bill eleven nineteen allowed certified teachers to teach as many hours as the district wants outside of their teaching area. And so these that are listed here will be teaching either partial day or a couple of hours outside of their particular teaching area. And we do this for accreditation purposes. So if approved, tomorrow I begin an adjunct application process that all of these listed teachers will go in and complete their portion of it, we reimburse them for that application and they receive temporary accreditation to be able to teach those classes. If there are no questions, I would recommend approval of agenda item six point nine point one through six point nine point six.
Any motion?
Move to approve, item six point nine point one through six point nine point six.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Six point ten, discussion of possible board action vote to approve an out-of-state travel request from the FFA advisor Chad Blocker to travel with the livestock judging team to the following judging contest. Coffeyville and Manhattan, Kansas on August eighteenth through nineteenth. And Burson and Hayes, Kansas on September twenty-second, twenty-third.
Mr. Blocker's, has done a really good job, they've hit the ground running, we've got a really neat judging team. They've already been able to go and compete in some different contests. And so really excited about the direction that program's taking. Recommend approval of this out-of-state travel request.
Summer.
Hanson.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
Continue their winning ways. Any new business, we don't have any, signing of documents approved by earlier action. Motion to adjourn. I agree, adjourn.
Second.
Pinkleton.
Yes.
McDermott.
Yes.
Kane. Hanson.